Call to meet in order with staff and pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Madam President, please call.
Trustee Bell.
Here.
Trustee Brewer.
Here.
Trustee Grant.
Here.
Trustee Jazinski.
Yes.
Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Trustee Williams.
Yes.
Trustee Williams.
Motion is carried. I'll ask for a motion to approve the general proceedings for the committee meeting of the whole of October 6, 2020.
Second.
It was moved by trustee Williams and seconded by trustee Jazinski. Any questions? Madam President, please.
Trustee Bell.
Yes.
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Jazinski.
Yes.
Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Trustee Williams.
Motion is carried. I'll ask for a motion to approve the proceedings, the general proceedings of the board meeting of October 13, 2020.
Second.
The move by trustee Bell, seconded by trustee Jazinski. Are there any questions? Madam President, please.
Trustee Brewer.
Yes.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Jazinski.
Yes.
Trustee Todd.
Yes.
Trustee Williams.
Trustee Bell.
Motion is carried. Item number five, public comment. Our question to the comments will be directed to the mayor. Each speaker is allowed one opportunity to speak for three minutes and may not engage in debate, counter replies or rebuttal. Please state your name when you come up.
Mr. Mayor, I have a handout to pass out to the board that they would like to pass out originally or would...
You say you have something to pass out?
Yes.
Sure, you can pass it out to the...
Ms. President, my name is Rosie Williams-Bay. For the record, I'm coming to you today as the director of the Nancy Ellman Connekey Public Library with a couple of clarifications to statements that were recently placed on a Saw Village Facebook page. Because this page does the village's name and logo, it's my assumption that the board can identify who maintains it and can therefore pass along these statements. Number one, the article stated that we do not identify as being Saw Village. Our library name used to be the Saw Village Library. In the eighties, the library board decided to change the name in honor of former library board trustee and village clerk Nancy Ellman Connekey after her tragic death. She was instrumental in assisting in the referendum required to begin the Saw Village Library District. Because of these efforts and her dedication to the library and community, our district and library was named after her, similar to the Edward Paisel Community Center that was dedicated in the eighties as well. Number two, we are being antiquated and out of touch. Since I became the director, the library has undergone many changes. We have updated and maintained our website, created an email list serve that residents can sign up for to receive information regarding programming, new books, events, closings and much more. We have updated and maintained our Facebook page and created a new Facebook page for the Friends of the Library Committee. We've installed an electronic sign to help engage the community and inform residents of programming. We have purchased a color copy and continued to update our computers to ensure that they have the newest software for our patrons' needs. We opened for curbside service and reopened to the public before other libraries in our surrounding areas. This allowed us to meet the needs of our residents and residents of other communities sooner rather than later. It was mentioned of the costs of the free food at the library. I'm not aware of any free food from the library other than the food that is used during our programming, which is accounted for accordingly. If the author was referring to the free food pop-ups put on by the Illinois Partners and Co. in a softly voiced, there was no library cost for this. We offered the space, we assisted in the community service to residents. We are not responsible for any purchasing of the food or its actual contents. Why does the library charge, and I'm quoting here, "young black kids $1 to use the computer"? The library does not classify any of the charges based on programming or race. Due to grant funding, required computers can only be checked out to adult cards. Adults can pay $1 with a valid library card, $2 with a charge license or state ID. The library director position was dumbed down. I personally hate offense to that. I have a bachelor's in psychology. I have a bachelor's in psychology. I was a volunteer at the library from 12 to 15. I was an employee of the library from September 1996 to January 2000. I worked at DePaul's Research Library for several semesters from 2000 to 2001. I became a part-time employee in 2016. I have increased programming and improved...
She can have my time.
Sure. Thank you. Since my tenure, I have increased programming, increased community involvement and awareness, and increased circulation numbers. I cannot speak to how the position was posted then, but I can say that every position under my tenure has been posted in-house on Facebook and our website and our rails. We remain a safe space for all of our community and invite everyone here to visit us to see what really happens here. This article makes it apparent that many people here have not stepped into the library for years at all. I wanted to make sure that I presented this to the board as a whole because the Saw Village Facebook page is where this came from. The village is named, the village is logoged. So anything that anybody would look at that page, it would look like this entity in this building is downgrading another taxing body in the community. It's not appropriate. And since I said, since it's got our name and our logo as a town, someone's got to know who's writing it so that they can definitely... Thank you for giving me that, Mr. Mayor. That was amazing. Thank you.
Yeah.
So somebody obviously who identified himself as writing it. I want to make sure...
Hold on, hold on just a second. Are you talking to us or are you talking to the...
Yes, I'm talking. See, I'm talking to the board.
That's what you're doing.
Well, him giving me the...
Hey! Excuse me. Excuse me. Excuse me. Excuse me.
This is the issue right here. So what I'm saying to the board is, as a whole, your name and your logo is being used to degrade other taxing bodies. I'm working to be able to promote programming in this village. I'm working to be able to promote things for the children, and that's counterproductive when a separate taxing body is saying negative things about the taxing body, especially implying anything to do with race and the racial culture that we live in. I think that it's inappropriate. I think if a personal Facebook page wanted to say this, I think that's great. They can downgrade the library anything they want to, if it's an individual. As a board, it's not appropriate. So when I was a trustee, I was informed that the mayor could reach out through the attorneys to find out who had owned the IP address, and they could give them a cease and desist letter to tell them to stop using the name and logo. That mayor at the time chose not to do that. I'm asking that this mayor take the opportunity to go through the village attorneys and send a cease and desist letter so whoever owns the IP address to stop using the name and logo. Should the mayor choose not to do that, this is again a situation where trustees, four or more trustees can get together, talk to the village attorney, and ask the cease and desist letter be sent to the person who has his IP address. If you don't know who it is, your IT person Gerald Pike can find out. You can talk to your attorneys and you can send it out. I'm asking that the board as a whole realize that the library is another taxing body that's here to serve the public, not just individual needs. Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your time.
My name is Elizabeth Norcutt. I am a member of the library board. Can you still hear me? No. Okay. I don't want to drop it. My name is Elizabeth Norcutt. I am a member of the library board. I'm nervous up here, people. I'm sorry. I'm really upset with like what Rosie has just said on Facebook. I think as a board, we have been very fiscally irresponsible, and our director is very much family-oriented. I don't know who this person is that's writing this or persons, but I have not seen anyone other than my own children and a few others that are in this room right now at a board meeting. So if you're going to say something negative about something, at least you should know what you're talking about, and it's very upsetting. I think us on the board, we volunteer. We're not paid, and this just upsets me to no end because I give up my time and my energy. And I encourage everyone to come check out the library. It has really improved as far as patronage, the kids' programming. That's really about it. Please come and check us out. Thank you.
Frank Williams, 1633-216, please. First of all, I want to apologize for the way I acted a few minutes ago, but that is my daughter. Second thing is that we need to stop putting stuff out wrongly about people. It's not nice and it's not appropriate. If you're a grown man, please act like one. Please act like a man, and quit putting out stuff that has no bearings on this village at all. I'm sick and tired of it. Now, the thing of it is, my wife don't bother me, but she's a trustee, but when you put out lies, that's comfortable and different thing. Now, you've got to understand something. She's my wife first, trustee second, and my ideals of these things that you want to put out about her, please put it out there if it's true. Now, Frank Williams that you see standing here is a man. I love my family and treat me when I tell you I will protect them if necessary. If this is not a threat, this is a promise. So what I'd like you to understand is I'm not threatening nobody. That is not what I'm doing, so don't leave him saying Frankie threatened nobody. So I'd like to say this, two things else. If we come to this board meeting and come to the board meeting for the purpose of what the board meeting is set up to do, we wouldn't have arguments, we wouldn't have things on the streets about certain things, how come people do this, how come... I don't go around tracing nobody, what they do, how they do it, because it really doesn't matter to me. I'm one person that's standing here that got anything, anything that a poor man wants. I have it. So what I would like to do in clarification, threatening nobody, I didn't do it. I'm not threatening nobody. Only thing I want to make clear is that that's my wife. That's the only thing I'm saying to her.
Linda Washington, just a couple of things I want to bring up tonight. First of all, I do want to say to trustee Jazinski, I give you my complete condolences and the loss of your mom, praying for you and your family. Now, I also just have a few concerns that I want to bring up tonight after talking to several residents on behalf of Saw Village Citizens for Public Awareness and Informative Dialogue Committee of Saw Village. Looking on Facebook is just a way that people get a lot of information that's going on and what's going on in Saw Village. Unfortunately, because we don't have a communication with the Saw Talk or any other publication that comes out that legitimately can let people know what's going on, people have to resort to what they read on Facebook. One of the articles that some of the residents was talking about was the amount of money that's been collected from the gaming stores that's in the village, primarily from the gas and washing. And I did also see that article that residents had some concerns about where approximately over $50,000 have been collected from January to today. And so we was just wondering where is that money going that's being collected from the gaming, approximately $50,000. I think it was the article put in there by Gary Holcomb, who is pretty accurate about things that he reports, and I'm sure he has no problem with providing the documentation that he has. Also, I just want to remind the trustees that they are responsible to follow the money that's going on in the village. Wherever money is flowing, you're supposed to know about it. You shouldn't have to afford it. It should be something that you should have access to. And that also includes, and you can let me know if I'm wrong when you address this at the end of everybody speaking, vendors and contractors and anybody else that have contracts with the village, all of the trustees should know about it. When I was a trustee, we had fireworks. Rose is still here. Everybody had to review that firework contract, and they had to make sure that there was a legitimate company, how much it was going to cost to have the fireworks. It wasn't a secret, but only a couple of people knew about it, but all of the board didn't know about it. And I'm talking about the movie that they had in the park, talking to some of the people. I have found that some trustees didn't know anything about the contract for the movie in the park. Did you say time?
I said one minute.
Okay. Some trustees didn't know anything about the contract for the movie in the park. I think it was an excellent idea, but we have to maintain transparency. Real quickly, when Chavez was a trustee, he wanted to have a petting zoo over here. The trustees told him no because they didn't see the contract for the zoo. So if anything is going on or anything is happening in the village, all of the trustees should see the contract, know who it is, know who's paying for it. I have booked bags for private donors who all still wanted to know where the money came from. I asked who paid for the movie. We had employees out there all day from 3:00 to 11:00 that night when they paid for being out there for the corn and dog rolls and the movie. And I'm just asking if you can give some clarity on the minutes. The accounts payable is still not on the back table, and they had said they was going to start putting that back out there. So I hope you think about the residents and be more open with us and let us know what's going on.
All right, now, in regards to this communication that we got, I'm sure all the trustees got it. I cannot answer for a Facebook page that is not sanctioned by the village. A person wants to use that name, you're right, I can't ask. Board wants to take legal action against it. It will be costly, but if that's what the board would like to do, they're the ones going to vote the money out to do that. But to make a comment that a taxing body is talking about another taxing body, that Facebook page is talking about is not a taxing body. So, but these five comments, these five points that are on here, I appreciate you bringing those to our attention and rebuttal on them, but I have, at this time, as mayor, I have no comments on them because, as I stated before, I don't and I cannot sanction a page that is not backed or paid for by the village residents. So it's just like anything else, when they put anything else out there, period, not just on Facebook and any other media that they claim to do about anybody else, his family or whatever, I mean, it's a shame that that does happen. It's a shame that it has been happening for years, not just, it's not the first time. There's been people who've had their families dragged over the mud, I would say at least eight, nine years. So this is not something that's brand new. It's a shame that we have to do this, it's a shame that a person has to resort to that. But then again, as far as mayor, as far as me being mayor to sanction a particular page on Facebook, I don't have that kind of power. I do understand that the library is for the village, and that's where it should be. It is for the village, it's paid for by the taxpayers' money, so it should be holding to the village, and I know that they've done a lot of things in the past few years to try to change some of the things that were going on, updated and all these things that are here. I understand, I see. As far as the comment about family members, it's a shame that we have to resort to that, but this has been going on, I know, for at least three or four years now. And I don't know what to do to stop that. I just hope people will try to be more cognizant when you try to... One thing, talking about a trustee or a mayor or a public official, but when you have to resort to a family member, and it's happened to me numerous occasions, it's a shame. I don't say much anymore. I've got a lot of flack behind it, but when you do say something, it's another incident if somebody else goes, going to keep going back and forth, but it's a shame that we have, that people have to resort to the family members when it comes to any political aspect in the village. As far as the money collected from the gaming that goes going to the general fund, it is absolutely noted, and I'm sure with all the fraud that we got going on, it's not, we don't have anything put out on a regular basis, but every time we do our quarterly reports, it shows that, you know, where the money's collected from. So that's not a problem. And yes, what is it used for? Just like the waterfront money, it's used for expenses in the village. That's another income that we have coming in, and we use it for, as we do everything else. As far as the movie in the park, the board was given the cost and was given everything about the movie in the park before it happened. Also, it was 100% money that was actually donated, so it was privately donated by different people, different entities, so it did not cost the taxpayers a dime to put that movie out there, to put it in there. It was money that was gratefully appreciative by the people, the public, and then also our clerk went out and she was actually able to get all the money, and she begged enough to get it, and that's literally speaking. She actually did beg to get the money to put the movie in the park on, so it was not a taxpayers' expense. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Facebook page, Saw Village E News is the only Facebook page that we have that's official as far as backed by the village. It's our Saw Village E News page. Saw Village E News page that's on Facebook. So that's the only page that is backed by the village. Okay. Mayor's report. I have a proclamation which I'd like to read at this time. And by reading this, I would like the trustees to please stand for this particular one. Whereas Cheryl Schultz spent many years volunteering for the village of Saw Village from the 1900s to 2009, and whereas Cheryl served as chairperson for the Community Relations Committee on Planning and Honoring Volunteers, volunteered for the village annual Christmas basket committee, helped to raise funds and provide food and gifts to many families in Saw Village for many years, served as a volunteer on the Parks and Recs Committee, and was a former owner of Mophead's Cleaning Service that provided cleaning services to the village. And whereas Cheryl Schultz was the beloved wife and former trustee of former trustee James Schultz and loving mother of the current trustee Sherri Jazinski. Now, therefore being proclaimed by the mayor and the board of trustees of the village of Saw Village, Cook County, that we recognize the many years of dedicated service to the Saw Village municipality and community and to the people of Saw Village that Cheryl Schultz has provided, and being further proclaimed that the village board recognizes the dedication and commitment that Cheryl Schultz has put forth serving the community and residents of Saw Village, and being further proclaimed that the village clerk has hereby requested to distribute a copy, a certified copy of this proclamation to trustee Sherri Jazinski and former trustee James Schultz, and that it has been spread upon the records of the village of Saw Village, dedicated this day, the 27th of October, 2020. Clai, Mayor Derek Burns, in attestation, Martha Campbell's group, village board. 4 and Region 10. Believe it or not, we're Region 10. And the latest one I have is from, this one was from Monday, yesterday, and where we're involved for Region 10, it says enhanced mitigations will be in effect until the following metrics are met. A decrease in average test positivity rate to or below 6.5 over a three-day period. A decrease in hospital admissions for the COVID-19 like illness over a three-day period. And number three, both ICU and the medical or surgical band of availability at or above 20% over a seven-day period. If all metrics are met, then Region 10 will be allowed to return to regular Phase 4. So the part that we're going to have to be under is, and until I see something, when I do see more, I will bring it back, but as of tomorrow, all of the in-house restaurants or restaurants that have dining in will now become carryouts. And this will go into effect. Bars and restaurants will be closed by 11:00 PM and may not reopen until 6:00 in the morning the following day. Bars and restaurants can serve patrons at tables with outdoor seating only. All tables should be placed six feet apart, no seating to multiple parties at one table. No indoor service or seating is allowed. No ordering, seating or congregating that the bars allow, and it is recommended that the bar stools be removed. No indoor service or seating is allowed. No standing or congregating indoors or outdoors while waiting for a table or exercising or exiting the premises. Meetings, social events and gatherings are limited to the lesser of 25 people or 25% overall room capacity. No party buses are allowed. The last one, gaming locations and casinos must be closed by 11:00 PM and are limited to 25% capacity and must follow the migrations for bars and restaurants if applicable. So basically, I guess the gaming parks will remain open, but the restaurants won't. Okay, well, this is what came down, and so we will tomorrow send these and give this out to the businesses that it applies to. And right now, I know we're looking at having some events here in the future. Halloween will still go on, but I'm still trying to find out about the trunk or tree, and I want to get clarity on that before we go into further on that too. But right now, Halloween and the trunk or tree is still going to go on. The trunk or tree is outside, so there shouldn't be much gathering in the Halloween that's coming to the homes. So those are the two things that I wanted to bring. If there's any other questions after the meeting, you can talk, or tomorrow if you want to call Village Hall and have any more clarity, or want any more clarity, I'll be glad to provide that. Okay, with that being said, village clerk, madam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
The last one, gaming locations and casinos must be closed by 11:00 PM and are limited to 25% capacity and must follow the migrations for bars and restaurants if applicable. So basically, I guess the gaming parks will remain open, but the restaurants won't. Okay, well, this is what came down. And so we will tomorrow send these and give this out to the businesses that it applies to. And right now, I know we're looking at having some events here in the future. Halloween will still go on, but I'm still trying to find out about the trunk or treat. And I'm, I'm going to get clarity on that before we go into further on that too. But right now, Halloween and the trunk or treat is still going to go on. The trunk or treat is outside, so it shouldn't be much gathering in the Halloween that's coming to the homes. So those are the two things that I wanted to bring. If there's any other questions after the meeting, you can talk. Or tomorrow, if you want to call Village Hall and have any, any more clarity, or want any more clarity. I'll be glad to provide that. Okay, with that being said, Village Clerk, madam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And on the heels of your report that you just gave, I'm not certain how some of what I'm getting ready to report will be impacted simply because coming up, well, tomorrow is not going to impact because tomorrow we're having a virtual property tax appeal forum, and that is through Zoom. And this is for the entire Bloom Township. So anyone that has property in the village and you want to know the appeal process, that information is on the Salt Village E News page. And if you do not frequent Facebook, then feel free to contact the village clerk's office and I will send you the link, okay? Moving on, on November the 19th, the National Kidney Foundation is going to be here. I believe trustee Williams reported on that last week. And they are supposed to be here to provide wonderful screening opportunities. I mean, and it's at no fee at all. Now, you know, when we talk about some of the other Facebook pages and all are included, and I've mentioned this before. If you want to report on something positive that's going on in the village, visit the Salt Village E News page. This information is there and you can share it. So then that way, people will see that you're operating in a degree of fairness and equity opposed to just only anything negative. So I am going to appeal to, I know that there are two people, at least two people, three people in here now that have Facebook pages. I'm going to ask you to post both of these events on your page. One other thing that I'd like for you to post on your page, if you don't mind, in November on the 21st, we're having a candidates forum. This is not the same that we usually have in March. This one is solely for those who are seeking, seriously seeking to be a candidate in the upcoming consolidated elections on April the 6th, 2021. If you're interested, you know someone who's interested, we will invite you out. If it's too many, then maybe I'll move it and change it to a Zoom meeting. I'll be flexible where that's concerned. But if you can remember, board members, this was planned before and it was canceled because only one person registered for it. And in times like this, we have to have people to register for our events. So far, when I checked yesterday, again, only one person had registered. The deadline is November the 9th, and it is a very firm deadline. Okay? And I'm hoping to see some of the trustees who are up for reelection to be there. Some of the stuff you probably know already, but you know what? You can always know something more. And then I'm going to ask any of the trustees to communicate with me to let me know which one of you would be on the program so that you can present the duties of a trustee from a very informed mindset. I cannot be before you trustees and people within my voice without letting you know that it is very important that we G-O-T-P, get out the vote. We must vote, we must engage all of our family and friends in the voting process. It's recommended now that they develop a plan. What are they going to do? How are they going to get there? Are they doing early voting? Are they doing mail-in ballots? Are they doing mail-in ballots and then decide that they want to do onsite? However it is, but I can say that if you are doing early voting and it's probably too late now because we've been announcing it so much. But the South Chicago Senior Center on Enterprise Drive, there has not been a line, there's not been any way. You just walk up there and go straight in to register, get registered and get your ballot and do what you need to do. So you may want to do that. Trustees, I would like to consider putting on the committee report, on the committee meeting, a subject or a topic that I had discussed a while back, but we never went through with it. And that is public comment. Public comment, the method for public comment. And I would like to propose something to you that I have seen done in numerous other cases for open meetings such as this. And it flows with the Open Meeting Act. So we'll talk about that a little bit later. And Mr. Mayor, that completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Village Engineer, Mr. Jim Zarni.
Thank you, Mayor. Quite a number of things tonight. First of all, construction on the I-394 water main replacement project is completed and the village has applied for the operating permit for the new water main. Construction for the West Elevated Tank Repainting Project has started and is in the smittle phase. Construction for the 221st Street culvert replacement project has started and is also in the smittle phase. Construction for the 2020 TIF resurfacing and intersection improvements project has started and is likewise in the smittle phase. Robinson is nearly completed with the fire hydrant replacement project design with an expected bid opening in early November, late November at the latest. Robinson is nearly completed with the sanitary sewer cleaning and televising project design with an expected bid opening in later November. And finally, Robinson is finishing gathering the documentation requested by IDOT for their MFT audit. And that concludes my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, Village Administrator, Jerry Hurkies.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Board members, last meeting, we talked a little bit about fire hydrants that we do every meeting. I was being facetious. But Public Works Director Kevin Wheeler and I have discussed a game plan that we had asked for, for this hydrant project. And we discuss it every day since our last committee meeting. I know it's an important issue for everybody. I know we try to get this thing as right as we possibly can. We have agreed that Public Works would work on the hydrants on the south side of Salt Trail, Salt Trail Road. And the private contractor would work on the hydrants on the north side of Salt Trail Road. This is because the Public Works guys have a better handle on these south end hydrants. And they have a better knowledge of the pipe and valves that are needed to be replaced on the south side. Our RFP also includes or indicates that the private contractor would work on the hydrants on the north side of Salt Trail Road. Our plan will be that we update you every week of what's going on with our hydrant program. Discussing the past weekend's work and also on the next scheduled weekend's project. Our first weekend for Public Works to start in hydrants is Saturday, November 7th, if we go with the Saturday program. We have charted the hydrants that need repair and how it can get more than one hydrant fixed at a time, depending on the location. On the very first weekend, we're shooting for four hydrants, all on the same main. And then we'll go from there and try to get as many hydrants, normally two at a time. We get down to the individual ones that need special handling. Adding to the workload is the replacement of the main water valves. And if you're familiar with our water system, we have main water mains that have valves that need shut off. And each hydrant is supposed to have a shut off by itself. The additional valve for the hydrant, but if the water main shut off is, is close enough to our hydrant program, our Public Works guys want to go and replace that valve also. So it makes a lot of sense that if we're digging up the street and there's a main valve that's bad and they know which ones are bad, it would make it behoove us to continue on and get that valve replaced. So somewhere down the line, we don't have to reopen that street. I'm sure you're familiar with the shut offs. You know, each water main has a shut off, each hydrant has a shut off, they're supposed to, if they're in working condition, and each home has a shut off, which is a completely another project that we need to work on. So these are programs that we're trying to get to. Some of these things haven't been touched in 50 years. Some are working very little, some are not working at all. And then, of course, is going to be the boil water issue when the water main lines are shut down. And that's going to have to be issued and followed by our residents who are notified and affected. So the game plan is not a perfect game plan, but a plan to move forward with the report every week so you know what was done, how long we're going to be doing it, and what we have to do for the future. Trees. So the next issue is trees. And we've talked about trees for a while. Public Works Union has tenderly agreed to allow the village to contract a private tree contracting company to remove the larger trees from our parkways. And we do this as a project. The agreement reached will be the removal of trees 36 inches in diameter and above. So it will be at our waist, 36 inches of diameter of a tree and bigger on the parkway, which adds up to, in Kevin's estimation, 67 trees. And the same kind of dynamics also. We, Kevin has reached out to four different companies, got four proposals on tree removal from the licensed and bonded companies. And then we will discuss this, obviously, at committee meeting before we move any further. But that's just something to let you know we're moving forward on also. One of the pumps on well two needs to be replaced. We've gone through a regular inspection of it. We received one price for that pump. We're looking for another price before we move forward on it. But it's very important that we get a new pump for well two. And we have been offered some very, some free slightly-used play equipment and handicap accessible stairs from a good friend of ours. Our Public Works Department is working on ways to get that picked up for us, hopefully by next week, and get that into Carroll Park for the mayor's direction for the children to play on. I've also sent each one of you a memorandum of understanding that I have worked out with the realtors to stop the legal battle that we have been going on for the last past year. There's some simple changes that are drawn up by the attorney. And along with the realtors and myself, we tried to get a recollection here. This is to be discussed hopefully at our next committee meeting, Housing Committee meeting that's going to be taking place in the next couple of weeks. I'm asking the committee to discuss, take a look at it, discuss it and bring it back to the board for any suggestions that they have so we could discuss this at our committee meeting after the Housing Committee. And this MOU, or memorandum of understanding, will finally put this issue behind us. Because as much as they have a cost with their attorneys, our attorney's costs for this also. And it's not cheap and it continues to linger on, although we've done very well in court. I would think it's time for it to end. Demolitions. We have some homes that are, need to get demolished. We have homes that have fire, have been had fires. The roofs are missing, the back entries are missing. We have gone to our attorneys to get them into court. We received two search warrants that the chief and our court enforcement officer is working on. They get in the house, do a report, get that to the judge, so we can get an emergency demolition order on that. We have money from the IEDA that covers that demo project. So we're trying to get some of these older homes that have been burned and sitting there for a while knocked down finally. And hopefully, someone will start to redevelop that. And finally, at the last meeting, there was a discussion about things that need to get done. And one of them was the union contract, the Public Works Union contract. And one of the reasons that it's not signed is because we haven't got it back yet. We had the original one. They had some changes they wanted to make. It's in our attorney's hands now. When they get it to us, then we'll sign it. And Mayor Cork and I will make sure we get that done, signed, sealed and delivered. And that's the end of my report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, I do have a question of the third case. As far as the cost compares, the cost, we had asked for the cost for the fire hydrants. I just wanted to get a ballpark figure. Because the last time we talked about it, we had two different costs. How much it would cost, how much the fire hydrants would be, like the labor costs, and then it kept changing.
What we had before was two different kinds of proposals. One, they would hire two part-time. And then we had my program that we put together. But I will get you an exact amount of what that's, I had, I had on my proposal, the cost of the hydrants and the cost of the employees. We were told that the cost was a little bit higher for the hydrants that I had. I'll get that exact number too.
I just needed to see that. And then you also stated about the trees. You have, I think, did the union okay 60 replacements or are they just okay?
Well, they were going with the size. They were looking at the bigger trees.
As far as how many that we can.
I reached out to them today. I had to give them the number of trees that we have that are 36 inches in circumference and larger.
Okay, because I didn't want to get started until we at least could know where we're at and do once we get things started. Okay, reports of departments. Financial Administration, our director, Michelle Royster.
Good evening. The Finance Department is requesting approval of disbursements totaling $238,633.99. This amount consists of payroll and benefits in the amounts of $137,314.09 for the pay date of 10/23/2020. In addition to accounts payable registered dated 10/27/2020 in the amount of $238,633. Sorry. The forensic audit and the independent audit are progressing. We hope to have the forensic audit concluded and the independent auditors alongside by late November, early December. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Fire Department, Chief Stephen Barrett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Fire Department responded to 100 calls for the service period of October 8th through October 22nd. With the most serious was the plane crash on around 30 and 394. We assisted state police for about four hours. We provided the landing zone for the UCAN helicopter. We received a letter that night from the UCAN director stating that our ground units did an amazing job. We did all that we could. We allowed the patient to speak to his family before taking off and everything. And so I just want to give my guys a, a public, a good job. We don't see things like that happen too often. And so for this being our first, I think they did an amazing job. Unfortunately, the patient did pass away from his injuries. A reminder that COVID-19 virus is still on the rise. We're seeing this. I know we've been hearing this all night, but we're seeing a rise in cases every day with our ambulance company that's going out and servicing our community. We're seeing a lot more and more ambulance calls for possible COVID exposure. So I, I just want to encourage everybody to make sure you wash your hands, mask it up if you're going in public and wiping down everything and make sure that you can protect yourself. If everybody protects themselves, we can try to cut down on this spread. And that concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Police Department, Chief Malcolm White.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Village Board. The, the calls for service report for the period of October 14th through tonight, the Police Department responded to more than 440 calls for service. During that same time period, officers made eight arrests. There was a portion on my report that I believe some of you have gotten. There was a portion on my report that I believe some of you have got in your packet about department commendations. We're going to bypass that tonight because the family involved was unable to attend. When they do get the opportunity, we will have those officers in. And we thought it important that the young lady be here. So they could not attend tonight. The other point is our violent crimes investigations. You know, so often, especially the people who were attending my chat with the chief, it's hard to gauge the measure of crime prevention because you're preventing it. So I mean, the only thing people might say, oh, it's been quiet lately or something to that degree. But sometimes, as we're going through, running through numbers and targeting certain things, targeting certain issues, it becomes measurable. From July to September. Now, my report says since July 2020, but it actually was July through September. This does not include October. The South Village Police Department recovered over 22 illegal guns from the streets of South Village. That's our department, the Police Department, the South Village Police Department. I know a lot of times you guys see the chairs floating around. But just our Police Department recovered over 22 guns from the streets. Since then, 10 suspects were charged with weapons offenses, including several parolees who have been taken off the streets. The South Village Police Department will continue to work towards developing methods of gathering information and vigilant patrol, as well as investigative tactics to take more violent criminals off of the streets. Again, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Village Board. That ends my report.
Thank you. Job well done. Reports of trustees and standing committees. Public Service Committee Trustee Gary Bell. Public Service Committee Trustee Bernice Brewer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things. The first thing is that I want to do, we're working on a purchasing order project with the Finance Director. So we're going to try to develop something now with, develop the purchase orders for everything that we buy here in the village. We haven't gotten started yet. So just to let you know and all the trustees know that we need to start, you guys need to come up with some ideas about what you need when we do a purchase order. The second thing I would like to talk about is that when I ask for something to be put on the agenda, for some reason it's not getting there. I don't understand. There is an ordinance out there that says that only two trustees need to put something on the agenda. For some reason, a couple of times before, the items that I want to put on the agenda was not put on there. So I'd like some clarification on that because there is a South Village ordinance that says two trustees should can put something on the agenda. And the third thing is that moving forward, I want to congratulate everybody who participated on getting the fire hydrant project started. It's a win-win for the residents. We've been looking for this for the last couple of decades. So I'm hoping this thing will start next week, the fire hydrant project. And I really appreciate everybody's help with the project. And that's the end of my report.
Okay, Budget and Finance, Trustee Roger Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did have the chance to speak to the Finance Director. And we are going to try to get an updated budget to actials pretty soon, within the next few weeks. And we all understand where we stand the first five months of our fiscal year. Also, in regards to Public Safety, I'm sorry, Public Services, I want to say that I would like to make the request of Mr. Herkies. He just stepped out. But before his time started, we used to have a map that had all the fire hydrants listed and they were color-coded by, you know, red, yellow, and green, whether they're working, not working, or in repair. I would like to bring that back. And I think that we should have it here every Tuesday at a meeting so we can track the progress of those hydrants and see where we stand weekly basis, see what has been fixed and not fixed. So he just stepped out. But I just want to make that known in front of the board that I'll make the request of him so we can see how that looks. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Housing and Government Relations Committee Trustee Sherry Juzinski. Okay, Ordinance Review Committee Trustee Linda Tha.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Ordinance Review Committee has not scheduled a meeting yet. I want to get together and find out when we can meet with Cook County Health Person and our Community Development Director to work on that ordinance that has to do with the pop-up stands, the tents or whatever that are going up. So I know we don't have a meeting next week here, but I'm hoping to have in the next couple of weeks that we, our committee will get together and discuss that. We have several other things too. I also noticed that on the agenda, there's an ordinance to be passed, but that needs to come back to our committee because we need to add the language. So that will be in the next couple of weeks. And that ends my report.
Okay. Public Events Committee Trustee Deborah Ridge-Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone who donated or attempted to donate blood last Saturday. 19 donations could save 57 lives, so I thank everyone who participated. The next blood drive is scheduled for December 26th. This Saturday is the final food box distribution under the current USDA contract that is being held by our sponsor. A new allocation is being bid as we speak. I will let everyone know as soon as the big box distribution can begin. This Saturday will be held at 8 o'clock at Bloom Trail High School. We will have 800 boxes of fresh fruit, vegetables, dairy, milk, cheese, and eggs. The Saturday allocation is totally separate from the weekly pop-ups conducted by another organization for which I am a volunteer. Thousands of families per week are provided with a variety of foods where it is true that some occasionally could be slightly outdated or about to be outdated. I guarantee you that it is up to the person who receives the food to decide whether or not they want to use that food because this food is being distributed from this manufacturer to all food pantries throughout the South Suburbs. And I'm also proud to say that the South Village Public Events has a Facebook page which keeps residences informed as much as they can about events that are happening in and around South Village. So that is just another official South Village page that people can relate to. And I did try to, as a Public Events Committee, bring back the SOC Talk when I first got elected, when I first got the Public Events Committee. I asked to actually bring back the Public Relations Committee, which was in charge of the SOC Talk and the website. And I was denied that. That offer is still on the table. I would be more than happy to bring back the SOC Talk and update the website as part of that committee. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Trustee. Oh, okay. The tour just reminded me that at the period of time, our conference call does disconnect itself. So I apologize if someone was on there, but I didn't hear anybody on there. So that particular, it is disconnected now. So we're, so for the record, we can say that now. It does disconnect itself, so no one is on the call.
It disconnects when no one else is on the line other than the caller, other than me. So if someone else is on the line, it would disconnect you. But it is just me, the caller. They hit shut.
Okay. Our new business. I'll accept a motion to approve the payable on accounts payable in the amount of $375,848.08. Moved by Trustee Bell, seconded by Trustee Juzinski. Any questions? Madam Pluck, please call again.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Juzinski?
Yes.
Trustee Tha?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Bell?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Item B, we're not going to bring it up at this particular time. There's some, that trustee just got to explain. There's some more things that has to be presented. So we're going to table that particular motion. And I go to item number 12, comments, comments from the Mayor Trustee. Starting with Trustee.
One question, Mayor, do you have to formally table it?
I'm sorry, it's not ready. You're right, it's not tabled. I made, I'm wrong. I'm just not going to bring it up. And you're right, it's not tabled. It's just not going to be presented. Okay. Comments, starting with Trustee Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, that map that Trustee Grant was referring to has been brought up not recently. And I thought I heard the mayor say he didn't know where it was. Do you know where that map is?
No, I took off of that map. There used to be one, you're right. You see all the tables starting, that was not in the office at all.
So we don't know where it's at, unfortunately. But that was a great resource as far as the hydrants. And second of all, it's been stated that there have been no hydrants repaired or replaced in the past two years. I beg to differ. I was asking to have a more precise report tonight on exactly how many hydrants. So I was wondering, maybe in two weeks, we can, if not bring back that map, we can bring something similar, but also with the report of how many have been repaired recently. And finally, I'd like to, I'm just going to read this. I'm not making any comment about it, other than the fact that I think that this applies to everyone that attends this meeting, whether it's a board member, an audience member, or a staff member. In our code, in section 30.36, calling unruly member to order expulsion. A, if any member transgresses the rules of the corporate authorities, the mayor or any trustee may call him to order. And when called to order, the member shall take his seat unless permitted to explain. B, any member acting or appearing in a disgraceful manner or using violent and insulting language to or about any members of the corporate authorities or who does not obey the orders of the chair shall on motion be censured by a majority vote of the members present or expelled by two-thirds vote of all members elected, provided, however, that a trustee may not be expelled a second time for the same offense. I've only seen this happen once in 12 years. And I really don't want to see that happen again because as far as our behavior at board meetings and as far as the social media, as bad as it gets, I think the one thing that we all need to remember is we're all human. We make mistakes. We can own up to our mistakes, but we don't need to be lied upon and we don't need to be talked to in a negative manner when it's totally unnecessary. We all have families that are affected by what's happening on social media. We have residents that are affected when there's lies and mistruths that are placed on social media. And our residents deserve more when they come to a board meeting or when they watch a tape. I happened to listen to a tape that I don't usually go back and re-listen to the tapes of the board meetings. But I did listen to the tape from last week's meeting. And in between, when we were on recess, the tape continued. And an individual was cussing and discussing and making untruths about the board and the situations that are happening at the village. And I find that offensive. Number one, this is at our board meeting where the mayor and the trustees are conducting business, but during recess. The language that came out of that person's mouth was, continued to be taped where the tape should have been stopped and restarted as the meeting stopped and started. That's my opinion. But all I'm saying is, when we're in this building or when we're referring to the South Village, can we have decorum? Can we have respect? And can we try to honor our staff, our fellow board members? And most importantly, can we show respect for our residents? Because if it wasn't for them, none of us would be here. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Bell?
About the fire hydrants. As you drive around town, you'll see the new hydrants have a great cover on the big port. It's called the storage connection. It's for the new fire hose. That's how you know they're new. There's, I believe there's like six or eight of them been done over the past few years. Car accidents, whatever. 221th and Shirley has one, and there's a few other ones around town. These things are supposed to save lives. Let's use them. That all I have said. Thank you.
Okay, Trustee Grant?
Thank you, Mayor. Trustee Williams, to answer your question, I think that I remember early part of this year, Mr. Weller said that there were, I think, between five and 10 that were fixed last year. And so I'm sure that now when we have more attention on it, they'll get more done, more expedited. Everybody, continue to stay safe. There is a surge in COVID-19. Continue to wear your masks. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Trustee Tha?
I have nothing at this time.
Trustee Brewer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First thing is, the issue of the accounts payable being put back on the table. Can we address that next week and have some copies for the residents? And second of all, the, second and third of all, the South Village co addresses when you have two trustees that ask for items to put on the agenda. I'd like to see that addressed. And also, whenever we have contracts in the village, if a contractor is doing work with the village, they should be certified or whatever. Licensed with the village. So we need to take a look at that. That's something I've been asking for all the time. Because we have contractors here who's actually doing work for the village, but nobody's being licensed or they're not working with the village. So that's something we need to address. But that's the end of my comment.
Trustee Juzinski? Hold on, just.
Well, I mean, they don't have to be discussed, but it's going to be done. You know, the accounts payable on the back table. I mean, that's not just being agreed to before. I'm sorry. This is comments from the Mayor Trustee. Not to get, but, okay, and I'll talk to you offline about it because I don't want anybody, oh, I don't want everybody getting on my back about it. So we'll talk offline about it. Okay. There you go. All right. Point of order.
Are you, are you through?
She asked me a question.
Trustee Juzinski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to make a statement. Last Monday, I lost my mother and my best friend. And I would like to thank the emergency services, the ambulances, the Fire Department, and some fellow trustees that came to my house and supported me and my father while we were going through all this. I would also like to thank you, Mayor, and the Board of Trustees for the beautiful plant that was sent to my ma's memorial Saturday. And I would also like to thank all the residents and our friends that have reached out to us in this trying time. Thank you very much for thinking about our family. And thank you for this proclamation. My mother did serve a lot of years for this village as a volunteer. And thank you again for all your support.
Thank you. And our prayers go with you too. Thank you so much. November 3rd was declared a holiday by our president. So that being, so that being said, it is a holiday. So Village Hall will be closed. That's next Tuesday. That's also voting day. So just wanted to let you know that we'll have the signs out that Village Hall will be closed and be handled as if it's a, be handled as a holiday. Also, if this, if they go back to phase three, what is hoping that this particular mitigation that's going on now would just be that, if they go back to phase three, then Village Hall will be closed again. So right now, it's not. It was just stipulated as businesses right now. So Village Hall is still open. And we hope that people that need to come up to Village Hall, please come up and take care and do business. So it's not, I want to reiterate, it is not closed. So if you have business with the village, as far as any water or anything to that nature, Village Hall will still open, so that you know that. But November 3rd is a holiday. And the next thing is Veterans' Celebration. As of this, right now, we're still going to have it here, November 11th at 11 o'clock. But things may change between now and then. There were, it may have to either be virtual or we just may not have it. But I was just talking, I'm sorry, I was texting, not texting, emailing. I'm going to, you go from talk, text, emails, Zoom, to all that. But anyway, that, Trustee Williams has a group that's wanted to help feed the. has a group that's wanted to help feed the veterans, and she claimed, she says she's gonna, they're gonna be doing the veterans that they have, and they're gonna have them to come pick it up. They may come down to that, our Ohioan people will actually come off of that, but right now, the veterans' celebration is gonna go on, and, but if it doesn't, believe me, I'll let you guys know before the end of this week is out, is what we'll still be able to have that done. Okay, with that being said, I'll next, for a motion to adjourn. It was moved by trustee Bell, seconded by trustee Brewer. Madam Black, please start the roll.
Trustee Juzeski?
Yes.
Trustee Tha?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Brewer?
Motion's carried.